And the time is seven o'clock. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Wattsburg area school district where we are student centered and future focused for a world class education. The board work session of May tenth twenty twenty one is now called to order. If there are any guests this evening that would like to address the board, please use the question and answer feature to provide your name and your address. At this time, I would ask that you please rise if you're able for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May we have a roll call, please, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Blazer.
President.
Mrs. Farrell.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Morbe.
Here.
Mr. Paris.
Here.
Mrs. Pound.
Here.
Mr. Pushjack.
Here.
Dr. Pushjack.
Here. Thank you very much for the roll call. At this time, the chair recognizes Mr. Ken Berlin for school reports. Mr. Berlin, do we have school reports for next week?
Yeah, we do have a school report on deck for next week, Dr. Pushjack.
Thank you very much. At this time, there are no citizens that have signed up this evening to address the board. There is one citizen on the comment, and that's Danny Carter. Mr. Carter, are you here? Mr. Carter, are you here? Mrs. Bendig, I did not see him on the attendee list. Can you verify that?
I do not. Oh. I do not see anyone on the attendees.
I don't either. Okay, thank you. We'll move on from our guest and citizens comment. That brings us to the superintendent's report. The chair recognizes Mr. Ken Berlin, Superintendent of Schools, for his report. Mr. Berlin.
Hey, Mr. President, this is Tarek. Can I know for one minute? There are folks trying to get on the meeting and they can't because it's the May seventeenth link that's on the website.
Okay.
Well, we can just pause here and then.
Circle back around for citizens' comment once people come back on.
Well, we should probably not conduct any business until everyone can view. Debbie, can you fix that, or do you want me to do it?
The website says May tenth, and then when you go to register for the meeting, it says May seventeenth meeting. So there's two different links, but you don't find the second one until you've already clicked our current meeting.
Debbie, are you working on that, or do you want me to sign on and do it?
I'm working on it. It's May tenth. The one on the main website front page should be working now. I had three emails from citizens that were trying to get in, and I've directed them to try again now.
Thank you.
I have one confirmation that they got in, so it should be good.
We'll wait a moment or two, if that's okay, just to allow any citizens just a bit of time to come in. Are we comfortable to proceed?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, I want to thank Mrs. Pound for pointing out we had some issues of citizens logging on. We do have one citizen logged on tonight. If that citizen would like to address the board, please sign up in the question and answer feature. Otherwise, we did have one other citizen that had signed up to address the board this evening. And Danny Carter, are you on the call? I did not see his name under the attendees. Mrs. Bendig, can you verify that?
I do not see that he is on either.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize to the community and the citizens for the little issue we had. Resolve now and will proceed with our meeting. That brings us back to the superintendent's report, and I will just announce no business was conducted during the time we were resetting. We had only said the pledge had a roll call, and then we noticed that there was an issue. So that brings us to superintendent's report, Mr. Ken Berlin.
He might. Sorry about that. I think I had a little internet blip. Try that again. Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
All right, so hopefully with the governor announcing that we can open up at the end of May, if all goes well, hopefully this will be one of the last times I go through some of these COVID numbers. But I did wanted to inform the board, just about an hour ago, I was on the FDA website, and they did authorize the COVID vaccine, the Pfizer, for twelve to fifteen year old adolescents, which is good because the research is showing that that's the last really susceptible age level. Students younger than that, one to ten, don't tend to get as sick or spread the virus as readily as adolescents and teens. So that's good news. Of course, we have our clinic tomorrow that we organized through LeCom. I think we were up to about fifty or sixty individuals, mixture of students sixteen and older, and a lot of adults from the community, parents and things, signed up for a time. So that's good. I don't think we're going to be able to accommodate the twelve to fifteen year olds tomorrow, because I'm sure LeCom and a lot of these other vaccine distributors are going to want to have confirmation of that. And the superintendents will talk to the Health Department, Erie County Health Department this week. So we may simply, if we can, find another partner, schedule another vaccination clinic for that younger age group of students. The numbers are pretty flat in the district. We had a little spike in Erie County, which is the red line that's coming down. We still are just into the substantial range. This number here would have to be below a hundred, and this number has to stay below ten percent. So if the trend line continues, hopefully it would take two consecutive weeks to put us back into moderate. Cases were down a little bit this past week in Erie County as a whole, and the zone map is again pretty consistent with the distribution of cases across Erie County in these five zones. And then the sewage data, you can see that starting to trend down. But this is not as complete. I'm not sure why they hadn't put the last weekend. This is interesting, though. This is the variant, the UK variant, and the Health Department told us last week that that is going to become the dominant strain in Erie if it hasn't already. And that's all I have for my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Thank you also for organizing the vaccination clinic for our students and for the community. Any questions from the board on Mr. Berlin's report this evening?
I have one question.
Mr. Blazer.
So, Mr. Berlin, with the announcements of some of the other things that are easing up at the end of May, you know, I know there was announcements about restaurants and, you know, and I guess striving for seventy percent of all adults to get to the no mask. Was there anything about larger gatherings, and I guess specifically anything that would impact our ability to have school board meetings, not virtually? Is there anything in the guidance or recommendations that affect that yet?
Not in the next few weeks, but if we hit that May thirty first number and the governor is satisfied with the vaccination level, all those capacity limits will go away, which would be great news for commencement. If the board wanted to start doing in-person meetings again, we could certainly do that. So everything, everything but the mask mandate would go at that point.
Okay, thank you.
This is Tarek. I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Pound.
I don't know if it's the right area to ask or not, but do we have an update on what the decision was around prom from the last meeting with the kids coming and talking?
You'll see that further down on the agenda, Mrs. Pound. We can discuss it at that time.
Okay, thanks.
It is C two on your agenda. Okay, thank you again for your report, Mr. Berlin. We appreciate that. The chair recognizes Mrs. Vicky Bendig for the Business Administrators Report. Mrs. Bendig.
Thank you, Mr. President. For tonight, I have a few reports. The Treasurers Bank, the Treasurers Report for General Fund, cash in the bank as of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty one, eight million nine hundred nine, nine hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred eight dollars and thirteen cents. And in the Capital Projects Report, there is seventeen dollars and ninety-three cents. Cafeteria Report, cash in the bank as of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred six dollars and twenty-one cents. Checks written since the last board meeting total fifty-nine thousand, four hundred nine dollars and fourteen cents. The cafeteria had one check written. It was a refund of student lunch accounts totaling one hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. And the high school activity account has a total in that account of seventy-six thousand, eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. The rest of the reports will be ready for next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Bendig. Any questions from the board for Mrs. Bendig under the Business Administrators Report this evening? Hearing none, thank you again, Mrs. Bendig. Moving on with our agenda, we have three items under legal advisement for your consideration for next week. LA one is the appointment of Mark Kuhar as Labor Relations Solicitor. If you recall, this is our current Labor Relations Solicitor, Mr. Kuhar, who had opened his own practice and then was invited to be a partner at McDonald, McDonald, Dilling Jones in Britain. So we're just following him and approving the the new position that he has. LA two is the appointment of the School District Solicitor. That's to continue with Christine McClure from Knox, McLaughlin, Gornall, and Senate. And then LA three will be the appointment of the Board Secretary, and that would be to continue Mrs. Bendig. So is there any question or discussion on the three legal items for your consideration next week? Hearing none, those will be on the agenda for next week. Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Marty Pushjack for Finance. Mr. Pushjack.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, we have six items under Finance for the agenda for next week. F one, to approve the monthly budgetary transfer from the Budget versus Actual Report as outlined. F two, to elect Martin Pushjack as the Wattsburg Area School District Treasurer and designated signatory for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. F three, I will be looking to approve an entity as the Wattsburg Area School District Depository for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. F four, to appoint Berkheimer Associates as the current delinquent per capita collector for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. F five, will be looking to approve the adoption of the proposed general fund budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two year in the amount of twenty-six million, seven hundred twenty-nine thousand and seven dollars. And to further authorize the secretary to post the following notice, the Board of Directors has tentatively approved the proposed final budget for the Wattsburg Area School District for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, and a copy of the said budget in the amount of twenty-six million, seven hundred twenty-nine thousand and seven dollars is open for public inspection on the district website. The adoption of the final budget is scheduled at this time for June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one at seven PM via the virtual meeting platform. And finally, at this time, the last item, F six, is to approve the renewal agreement with the Nutrition Group for the Food Service Management for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year with the option to renew for three additional years as outlined. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Pushjack. Mrs. Bendig, could you please speak to F three, the designation of depository item, and what our plans are to have a name for that blank space?
Sure. So we have, as historically Wattsburg Area School District has always banked with Northwest Savings Bank. That has been our depository. Since the Northwest has closed the branches that are closest to Wattsburg Area School District, the one in Wattsburg and the one on Grandview, we, I took this opportunity to do a banking services RFP. Those RFPs are actually due on Wednesday by, I think, two PM. So I will be reviewing the RFPs and have a recommendation for the new depository at the board meeting on Monday for your approval.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bendig. I did want to mention F five to thank the administration for addressing the deficit that we had, and we're actually staying under the Act One Index. We did not have to go to the full amount, and we appreciate that. And I thank the board for their willingness to support to those ways in which the administration closed that gap. And then I also think that we're in a good, good position with the Nutrition Group to continue providing excellent nutrition services for our students. Any questions or further discussion on any of the six items under Finance for next week?
I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Blazer.
So it's more about the process. I hope it's obvious. I have no issue with Mr. Pushjack, who's currently our treasurer, being elected as treasurer. But so would he serve then as treasurer through our November meeting of this coming year, knowing that he's not running for election again? And then in our December reorganization meeting is when we elect a new treasurer? Is that, is that how that works?
That's correct, Mr. Blazer, yes. Any other questions or discussion on the six items under Finance?
Just to clarify, Mr. Pushjack is not the current Wattsburg Area School District Treasurer. Our treasurer is and has been, for as long as I can tell, has been the branch manager from Northwest Savings Bank, which I polled the other school districts in Erie County, and most of them have a member of their school board, over half of them have a member of their school board as their treasurer. And it makes good financial and fiscal sense to me to have someone who is aware of our, maybe not daily operations, but our organization's financial operations, who's aware of our treasure reports and those kinds of things to be the treasurer as opposed to someone who is outside, and it's just a name, and they're a signer on our checks. So it's after polling the school districts and found out that they have school board members, some of them have just community members, some of them have a local CPA, but for the most part, it is a school board member. So that is why the recommendation is for Mr. Pushjack, who is the Financial Committee Chair, to be the treasurer.
Thank you, Mrs. Bendig. Hearing no further discussion, the six finance items on the agenda will be there for next week for your consideration. Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Josh Paris for Buildings and Grounds. Mr. Paris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item for next week. B one, to approve the purchase of a new powered lift truck and maintenance platform.
Any discussion on B one under Buildings and Grounds?
I'd just like to say that Eric, once again, has come through for the district. It's very difficult to find equipment right now with COVID shortages, so great job, Eric.
Thank you for providing that recognition for Mr. Schultz. Mr. Paris, B one will be on the agenda for next week, and I thank you, Mr. Paris, for Buildings and Grounds. The chair recognizes Mr. Jeremy Blazer for Personnel. Mr. Blazer.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the agenda for next week, Personnel, P one, Kelly Substitute Editions, approve the additions of the names listed on the agenda to the Kelly Educational Staffing Substitute List. P two, Service Substitute Editions, to approve the additions of Chris Bellou and Sean Bowman to Service Substitute List effective May tenth. P three, Resignations, approve the following resignations of Danielle Woodfield, effective July second, and Teresa Wells, Teresa Wells, resignation or purpose of retirement, effective July first. P four, Leave Requests, as listed on the agenda. P five, to approve the following conference requests, as listed on the agenda. P six, Appointments, to approve the following Personnel Appointments, listed on the agenda. P seven, Superintendent Evaluation Protocol, to approve the Superintendent Evaluation Protocol as outlined. P eight, School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding, to approve the MOU between Erie County Sheriff's Office and Wattsburg Area School District, effective July one through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. P nine, Tuition Reimbursement, to approve the tuition reimbursements as outlined in the attachment. P ten, Extended School Year Appointments, approve the following Special Education Extended School Year Summer Appointments, as listed below, and I think that's it.
One more on the next page, Mr. Blazer.
Oh, correct. You're correct. P eleven, I thought that was the same list. Summer Remuneration Appointments, to approve the following names listed on the agenda.
Well done, Mr. Blazer. Long list. Any questions or discussion from the board on the eleven items listed under Personnel?
I just wanted to acknowledge Tish Wells, Service to the District. She's been a great employee. She's held a lot of service positions, helped a lot of students and administrators with things over the years. So we're to miss her. And also, Mrs. Woodfield, her husband got a job back down in Harrisburg where she's from, but she's, she's been a great teacher, and our kids have really benefited from her service. So we wish her well, too.
We certainly do, both of those employees. Any further discussion on the eleven items under Personnel for next week's agenda?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Blazer.
So, Mr. Berlin, I think you put this in your, in your weekly report, but so neither of these individuals, I was wondering, are retiring with the available early retirement plan, and there have been no, no one yet taking us up on that offer? Is that correct?
Yeah, we haven't had any takers so far. They do have till June fourth. I know that it takes about four weeks at minimum to get an estimate from the retirement system. So I'm sure that, you know, they want to understand their net position before they, you know, make a commitment if they're going to.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Morve.
Under P6, with Jim Casper being the STEM teacher, I understood that he was taking his certifications to get to that point. Has he completed that? And that's why we're putting him on the appointment list for next session. Is that correct?
Yeah, so he's completed his grade seven through 12 computer science program. And he'll be taking that praxis. And then he is going to enroll in the four through eight mathematics specialty course into the fall. So he'll be, he'll be certified on a temporary, a temporary certificate, which is based predicated on him completing that educational program and obtaining the full certification.
Okay, anything else under Personnel this evening? Those 11 items will be on the agenda next week for your consideration. Thank you very much, Mr. Blazer, for the long list. Next on our agenda, the chair recognizes Mrs. Amanda Farrell for Policy. Mrs. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item, PL1, to approve the second reading of Policy 903, Public Participation in Board Meetings.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions on Policy 903? It was presented on the agenda for second reading. Hearing none, that will be on the agenda for your consideration next week. Thank you, Mrs. Farrell.
Thanks.
The chair recognizes Mr. Stephen Morve for Curriculum. Mr. Morve.
Yes, Mr. President, we'll have three items next week under Curriculum. C1, which is to approve homebound instruction for a Seneca High School student anticipated through April through June. Item number C2, which is to approve the 2021 junior senior prom for, at Seneca High School on May 22nd from 8:00 to 11:00 PM. And then finally, item C3, seniors for graduation, to approve those seniors who meet all the graduation requirements to receive the high school diploma as outlined in the attached list. Those will be the three items that'll be on the agenda for next week.
Thank you, Mr. Morve. Any question or discussion on the three items under Curriculum?
Yeah, this is Tara. Can we discuss prom?
Sure, go ahead, Mrs. Pound.
So last time we talked, I believe there was an action to discuss with the principals. So do we have a, a status on that?
Yeah, Mr. Angler met with those students and Mrs. Nolan, the advisor. And he's on the call, so I'll, I'll let him just kind of fill everyone in on, on what occurred.
Mr. Angler, good evening.
Hi, yeah, so we did the day after the board meeting. I met with those students and then like Mr. Berlin said, followed up with, with Mr. Berlin and Mrs. Nolan. And so we did bump up the date of graduation. So it was supposed to be June 4th, so we were able to move everything to May 22nd without too much difficulty. The one challenge of that is that districts for track are on that date. So we also moved it back an hour. It was supposed to go from 7:00 to 10:00. So moved, moved it from 8:00 to 11:00 to allow for anyone that's participating in the track meet, even the later events, they should still be able to make it. And we also held like a pre-signup before selling tickets, just to get an idea of how many guests we thought might be coming. And so thanks to doing all of that, I think that, you know, we should be able to go off without a hitch. All guests that people want to bring should be allowed in. And I think we, we pretty much were able to satisfy all the concerns that the kids had about it.
Thank you, Mr. for your willingness to meet with those students and the advisor to come up with this plan. And you had mentioned graduation, but you meant prom, which is moved to May 22nd. So Mrs. Pound, any further discussion?
Nope, thank you very much. Great news.
Yeah, great news. We like that kind of news. Our students came and we were able to accommodate them. That, that's exciting. Any other discussion on the three items under Curriculum this evening? Hearing none, those three items will be on the agenda next week for your consideration and I thank you, Mr. Morve. Chair recognizes Mrs. Tara Pound for Technology. Mrs. Pound.
Thank you. I have nothing to report for next week on the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Pound. The chair recognizes Mrs. Nicole Lee for Transportation. Mrs. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items for consideration next week. T1, Transportation Requests, to approve the transportation requests and ratification of field trips since last meeting as outlined. It is crowded in the classroom and the WHAMs, Envirothon teams. And T2 is Durham Bus Driver List, to approve an addition of Chris Homack to the Durham Bus Driver List for the 2020-21 school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Any discussion on the two items under Transportation? Hearing none, those two items will be on your agenda next week for your consideration and thank you, Mrs. Lee. The chair recognizes Mr. Shawn Mattson for Athletic and Extracurricular. Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three items this evening under Athletic and Extracurriculars. The first one is AE1, the Volunteer List, to approve the addition of Jonathan Kowalski to the Watburg Area School District Volunteer List. AE2, the Athletic Appointments, to approve Naomi Grove as seventh and eighth grade volleyball coach at Step 2, effective May 10th, 2021. And AE3, Game Help, to approve the addition of Bethany Cage and Andrea Moreno to the 2020-2021 Game Help List.
Any discussion or questions on the three items under Athletic and Extracurricular? Hearing none, those two items will be on the agenda for next week and I thank you, Mr. Mattson.
Thank you.
We have nothing under Miscellaneous for next week's agenda. Mrs. Lee, anything for Erie County Technical School?
Yes, I will have an update from the April 22nd meeting.
Thank you very much and I as well will have a brief update on our last meeting for the Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit. That brings us to Board Correspondence and Dialogue. Anything from the board this evening? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Gosh, so moved.
Nicole, say.
Thank you. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned. I thank everyone who attended our meeting this evening and wish you a safe trip home. Have a good night.